Good afternoon, welcome to our November 23 meeting of the Sandusky City Commission. Prior to tonight's meeting, we have an invocation offered by Commissioner Murray, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. May be missing Commissioner Murray. I will offer the invocation. Your heavenly Father, please grant your grace upon this city, this state, and this nation, in one of our times of greatest needs. Ask us to bless us, bless this holiday spirit, in the hopes that you protect us wherever we travel, wherever we mingle with people. Hopefully, you will shine your light over us and get us through this time. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God.
Ms. Twine.
Here.
Mr. Waddington.
Here.
Mr. Poole.
Here.
Mr. Harris.
Here.
I didn't yet see Mr. Murray.
I'm here. I will ask for a motion to excuse Commissioner Murray.
So moved second.
But a motion in a second discussion, without objection, the motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Commissioners, you have before you the minutes of our meeting of November 9, 2020. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington.
I move that we accept the minutes of the November 9 meeting and dispense for the formal reading.
But a motion in the second discussion, without objection, the motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Once again, we're holding this city commission meeting, I believe, for the 18th time electronically. Commissioner's staff are in attendance through our internet hookup in a variety of safe locations, as well as in commission chambers. We've asked our audience to either submit their questions or their comments in writing to our commission clerk, who will answer those that pertain to legislation as that legislation comes before us, as well as provide a response to any other audience question from the appropriate staff. I'd also like to acknowledge the fact that those participating in this meeting are doing so with the appropriate distancing and face mask at this time. Ms. Briggs, are there any questions from the public that pertain to tonight's agenda?
Yes, Mr. President, we have one comment for tonight's agenda. It comes from Ms. Sharon Johnson at 1139 Fifth Street in Sandusky. She said, "I would like an explanation and breakdown of the following appropriations as to why the appropriations are being made. Are the appropriations going towards bond payments, vendor payments, issue eight categories, et cetera? For the income tax refunds, the $115,000, why is there that much refund? For the community development, the $500,000, is this money being allocated to issue eight? Healthy Hayes, $276,150, what is this project? What way is the money being spent? The landing project for $1,850,000, is this a bond payment? The City Hall relocation, $414,285, the breakdown of that money, is this rent? Bayfront revitalization, $10,029,045, breakdown of the money? And the EMS fund, $179,000, what is this for?"
Those questions will be addressed as we get to that piece of legislation. Commissioners, you have before you several communications from staff recommending various legislation. Can I have a motion to accept these communications?
So moved.
Then a motion in a second discussion. Without objection, that motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Commissioners, we have six consent items to be considered this evening. Do any of you wish to move any of these items to the regular agenda? Ms. Briggs, will you present the consent agenda? And I understand that you are working from home, and I understand that you do not have the ability to put that up on our screen, so I'll ask commissioners to follow the consent agenda on their written paper that you have.
Through you, Mr. President. Contained in our consent agenda, item A is the disposal of IT equipment, and that is the second reading. Item B are the chemical contracts for 2021 for Big Island Waterworks and the wastewater treatment plant, of which there are eight. Item C is a contract with Robert G. Stadler for consulting for calendar year 2021. Item D is the contract with George J. Polis for consulting for calendar year 2021. Item E is an expenditure for dispatch software maintenance fees for the Sandusky Transit System. And item F is for budget amendment number three.
Thank you. Having heard these resolutions and ordinances, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move to accept the consent agenda items A, B, C, D, E, and F, and declaring that all ordinances and/or resolutions as drafted and presented to the city commission under the consent agenda shall take effect in accordance with the section reflected in the ordinance and/or resolutions, whether it be in accordance with Section 13 or Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
But a motion in a second discussion. As Ms. Johnson's question, I believe, pertains to item F, I wonder if we can have our city finance director speak through item F for us.
Sure. Through you, Commission President. To answer Ms. Johnson's questions, the income tax refunds that supplemental is needed because this year we've seen an increase in the income tax refunds for businesses and individuals. A lot of that is due to business refunds, and that would, I'm assuming, be due to COVID-19 and a loss of revenue. Community development, there is a $500,000 grant payment that will be made. That's the reason for that supplemental. Healthy Hayes, she asked what this money will be spent on. That was on ordinance 20-078. As it was passed, it says, "This will include full traffic signal reconstruction at Pierce Street and Columbus Avenue intersections, signal upgrades at Osborne and Tyler Street intersections, high-visibility crosswalk markings at all crosswalks, school zone flashers on Hayes Avenue, rectangular rapid-flash beacons at Johnson Street and Fireland South Campus, and pavement marking upgrades from Pierce Street to Osborne Street." The rest of these supplementals are due to the various purpose notes, so that answers all of her questions.
Thank you, Michelle. Additional discussion, commissioners, on the consent agenda. Ms. Briggs, will you call the roll on the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Now on the resolution and ordinances.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Those resolutions and ordinances are passed. Now turn to our regular agenda items. Ms. Briggs, will you present item number one, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Item number one is an ordinance declaring that certain real property owned by the city located at 430 East Market Street in Sandusky and identified as parcel number 56-00985.002 is no longer needed for any municipal purpose in authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement to sell the designated real property to Ronald and Warrenette Parthmore, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Harris.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second. But a motion in a second discussion. Mr. Webster, I wonder if you can elaborate on this. I believe it's one of the first amendments, perhaps.
Yes, so, we have been looking, and if you look at the Bicentennial Vision Plan, it talks about getting back into new, single-family or infill construction. As Sandusky has an older and built-out housing stock, there are a number of individuals in the market. Research that we've done has demonstrated that there's a real demand for people that would like to live in town, particularly many that would like to be close to the waterfront or downtown Sandusky, but that they're looking for new construction housing. And so it's been consistently part of our planning to identify sites where we could do infill new housing construction. And in the beginning of 2019, we were approached by Ron Parthmore about his interest in moving back into the city from the township. He had raised his children, both of whom had actually purchased houses, historic homes, in the vicinity of downtown. And in addition to that, they had invested in property at the Chesapeake Lofts downtown, and so he wanted to follow his grandchildren into the city, or the trailing grandparent, as it's become known in planning circles. And so he began to look with Matt Lasko for several sites, and the site that is on the agenda tonight was one of the sites that they identified. And because of some complications with our ownership and adjacent-site ownership, it took a while to come together, and our desire to maintain an urban form, so instead of allowing a curb cut off of Market Street, as you know, we worked to create a private alley system that will run behind the property where this will be built. And this is one of several developable sites for single-family housing that exists on this block that we now control at the city, and we're bringing it to your attention. And as you mentioned, Commission President Brady, there are other buildable lots that we hope to bring to market as well. We know that when we first brought Ron's legislation to the commission as related to the private alley, it was mentioned by Commissioner Poole to ensure that future sites are listed. We intend to list those on our website as soon as we are ready, and ultimately then to have standards for how we will determine how to move forward on future lots there. But we are very excited, and it does seem that there's a lot of interest for new construction housing in the city, and this is a good example, and will kind of show the way for others who wish to do similar projects going forward. And I want to thank Debbie Eversaw for her work on this. She's had to really scramble along with our law department to get this across the finish line, with Mr. Lasko's taking off from here on, and I'm really proud of the work they've done to get it done during that transition.
Excellent. One down and six to go, and our thanks to Mr. Parthmore and his wife for having the courage to believe in Sandusky and build in Sandusky. You do not see a lot of new homes built within the city limits, but perhaps this can be the catalyst to turn that around in downtown. Additional discussion, commissioners. Ms. Briggs, will you call the roll on the motion?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
And now on the ordinances.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Briggs, will you present item number two?
Yes, Mr. President. Item number two is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a three-year agreement with Garner Sanitation Services Incorporated of Sandusky, Ohio, for the rental and service of portable restrooms in city parks, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
But a motion in a second discussion. Mr. Klein, this principally deals with our portable restrooms throughout the city, and I know you all have to know that you have quite a schedule and mapping laid out as to where all these belong. Just amplify on how you adjust that map as we move through a busy, hopefully a busy tourist season coming up.
Yes, sir. Through you, Mr. President. I think I just clicked the wrong button on my computer, so if I'm sharing my screen, I apologize. I'm trying not to. So, on this contract, it's... I really enjoy when we have such a collaborative process, getting with Mr. Whirling because of all the programs that he's been offering, and the upgrades to all the parks, and getting with all of our field crews and seeing where everybody is. Our schedule is different this year than it has been in years past. We've really looked at where we need the restrooms, how we can accommodate all the other services and programs that we're doing, and we also have the option that if we have events, we did get a per-day price. We can do change orders in the future if we need to add facilities or take facilities away. So there's a lot of flexibility within this contract, the way that it's written, and it should get us into 2021 with the safety measures, too, because we also got an option if we want, and if we need it, we got a price for handwashing stations, too. So we're set for '21, and it's got the timelines and everything for when those restrooms will be out there. So I believe that's everything.
Good work, Mr. Klein. Additional questions, commissioners? Ms. Briggs, will you call the roll on the motion?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Murray?
Is now exiting.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
And now on the ordinances.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Briggs, will you present item number three?
Absolutely. Item number three is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Birch Hydro Incorporated of Frederictown, Ohio, for the wastewater treatment plant, digester cleanout project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Waddington.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second. But a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Klein, without getting terribly descriptive on this work that's going to take place, I wonder if you can just share with us that we got competitive bids and we're getting a good deal on this.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I don't know why nobody wants me to get descriptive on wastewater treatment plant projects, but... So our digester at the plant, it handles the sludge out there and it processes it, and inside of that digester is a mixer. Well, that mixer stopped working. What the mixer's intended to do is to keep the sludge relatively liquefied so it doesn't harden, so we can pump it out and dispose of it. Well, when the mixer stopped working, we couldn't pump anymore, and all the material inside there got really hard, so we can't remove it. So the first step is the contract that is in front of you tonight, which is to clean the digester and get somebody in there so that we can get all the material out. And then the second step, which we'll be possibly coming back later for, is to get inside, do investigation, and do whatever necessary repairs. At this time, we don't know those repairs because we can't get inside of the tank. Once this is done, we will be getting inside of the tank and developing a plan to get that fixed, and we'll come back with a separate contract. Hopefully, it's under... It's a small enough contract, but we have no idea at this point, so we'd like to proceed with this so we can get that back up and running.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Additional questions, commissioners? Ms. Briggs, will you call the roll on the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
And now on the ordinances.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Briggs, will you present item number four, please?
Item number four is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to approve the first change order for work performed by D.L. Smith Concrete LLC of Norwalk, Ohio, for the Safe Routes to School Sandusky Middle School Project, PID 103737, in the amount of $3,870,43 and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Harris.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance, ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
But a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Klein, the best news about this piece of legislation is that it is going to be paid for by ODOT, I believe 100%, so that is good news for our city. Additional questions, commissioners? Ms. Briggs, will you call, roll on the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
And now on the ordinances.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
And now on the ordinances.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Briggs, will you present item number five? And that is comprised of both A and B, but I'll ask you to just present A, and we'll deal with that for now.
Yes, Mr. President. Item 5A is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to grant two easements to Huntley Building LLC on city property currently utilized as public parking off East Water Street, Sandusky, for dumpster enclosures, and a stair walkway and entrance, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of ordinance 5A under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion.
Chairman.
Commissioner Murray?
I just wanted to advise my colleagues and the public that I had a pretty good detailed discussion this afternoon with the planning department, Mr. Klein, and the law department to make sure that these were appropriate, because this is a very important piece of property for the city in the future, and we want to make sure that, certain that we have a maximum flexibility while still addressing the needs of the property owners who are the city's neighbors to this piece of property. It's an old piece of property, there's a lot of history, but I'm confident the staff did the absolute best job that was possible under the circumstances in balancing those competing interests, and will be supportive of that legislation, of both pieces of legislation. Thank you.
Additional discussion, commissioners? Ms. Chairman. Call roll on the motion. Would that be Mr. Poole?
Yeah, just one question with regard to Mr. Murray's, what he added. Did we discuss with the other folks that use that parking lot prior to doing this? The other businesses around it use that lot?
Who would be able to answer that question?
Through the Commission President to Commissioner Poole, we've had various conversations over the years with the building owners, particularly those that front Columbus Avenue facing west, because they don't currently actually have great access from the rear of their buildings, and this at least is attempting to help clean that up. I don't know, in recent times, because these conversations have been going on for nearly two years as it relates to these easements, most of them were meant to be resolved as part of the marketplace development, and then they needed to have them wrapped up for Cook. I don't know how recent those conversations took place, but there have certainly been conversations with those building owners as the process unfolded over the last nearly two years.
May I ask, before we over-say the last five months, where have these dumpsters been? I mean, we're giving a license to something that is not, doesn't start tomorrow, does it?
No. Mr. Klein, I wonder if you can elaborate on that. This is, the dumpster locations have been in place for several years, I believe. Is that correct, Mr. Klein?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. These dumpsters have been in place for several years, and if you go out there, they're actually there right now. One of the stipulations within the dumpster enclosure easement was to make sure that they did not have exclusive rights to put their dumpsters there, but in those conversations with the adjacent property owners was to make sure that they also have rights to use that space. So that language was something that was important to the city to make sure that that was included.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Briggs, will you call, roll on the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance A.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ordinance 5A, Ms. Briggs, will you present number five, item B?
Yes, Mr. President. Ordinance 5B is an ordinance authorizing and directing city manager to grant an easement to Huntley Building LLC and Cook Building LLC on city property currently utilized as public parking off East Water Street, Sandusky, for a sewer line, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Communities, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Waddington.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance, 5B, under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter. Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Briggs, will you call, roll on the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
And now on the ordinances.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
That ordinance is, 5B, is passed. Includes our regular agenda, and we'll turn to our city manager for his report.
Thank you, Commission President Murray, commissioners, audience, and staff. I'll start with new and old business. The first for administration is to let the community know that we're in need of volunteers to serve on the city's boards and commissions. We are looking for people from all types of backgrounds, and those willing to serve on the Finance Committee, from the Finance Committee to the City's Public Arts and Culture Commission and everything in between. Please submit your application by Friday, December 4 to McKenzie Springs. Applications can be found on the city's website, on our social media, at the front desk of City Hall. If you have questions, please call 419-627-5850. But we're making a big push on behalf of the city commission, and I know McKenzie's But we're making a big push on behalf of the city commission, and I know McKenzie's been working really hard on this, to, to really bring some new voices and be representative of the city on our boards and commissions. So we hope that the public will strongly consider applying for this. Also, for the police department, Chief John Orzak retired from the department on November 6, 2020. Fortunately for us, he has not moved far from the department, he's now sitting next to me at City Hall. But in addition to Chief Orzak, Tracy Susanna also retired on November 11. Officer Robinson Lillo was promoted to the rank of sergeant on November 12, replacing Sergeant Susanna. We want to thank Chief Orzak for his service, as well as his continued service, and then give a heartfelt thank you to Sergeant Susanna for the many years of outstanding service to the community that she provided. She was, you know, very well-known in the community and a big part of our community impact team, particularly during COVID. You know, I saw a great deal of her during food drop-offs, et cetera, so we're really thankful for her service, and we wish her well in her future endeavors, and she'll be missed around the department. We'll also like to congratulate Sergeant Lillo, we look forward to watching him grow in his new role. Also, Jared Oliver, our new police chief, was sworn in on November 9 at 4:00 p.m. in the gazebo on East Washington Street at a socially-distanced event, and we're really grateful to have Chief Oliver on the job. He's been, kept pretty busy in his first few weeks with everything going on and off to a great start. And finally, Lieutenant Richard Braun announced his retirement in writing late last week. His retirement date is effective December 23, 2020. We want to thank Lieutenant Braun for his many years of dedicated service to the community. Moving on to the finance department, the Bureau of Workers' Comp Board previously announced approval of a $5 billion buyback program. The city expects to receive nearly $1.5 million in December due to this refund payment, per a bulletin recently announced from the state auditor. These funds can be received entirely to the general fund, which is better news than any other thing. We believed that only about a million could go to the general fund, so all of these funds are going to be put into the general fund to help offset the deficit for last year and this year, which allows us to maintain employment of critical services like police and fire, and actually to replace positions in many of those divisions, particularly in police and fire, as they become vacant going forward. Moving on to public works, we're seeking a motion to approve the submittal of a request for reimbursement to the Erie County Solid Waste District Grant Program to cover a portion of funds spent on the citywide cleanup day and yard waste drop-off day in October. Because the events occurred later than usual, all invoices were paid, and the deadline for submitting a request for reimbursement to community grant is December 1. We will be requesting a reimbursement of $2,500, which is the maximum allowed for qualifying recycling events. I'd ask for a motion to approve that request for funding.
So moved.
Second. Got a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, that motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, that motion is approved, and that is a great idea. Thank you for, thank you for thinking of that.
An RFQ will be advertised over the next few weeks to accept qualifying package, qualification packages for the Cleveland Road Safety Improvements Project. Funding is mostly for, through ODOT for that. Staff will bring back legislation next year once a consultant is selected and a contract finalized for this design, which is scheduled for completion in 2022. Also, construction on the Sandusky State Theater was slowed due to high winds, but Water Street was open last week to two-way traffic and on-street parking. Staff is working closely with the contractor to get the Jackson Street parking lot open before Thanksgiving in anticipation of more downtown visitors this holiday season. Speaking of this holiday season, the Christmas tree and other decorations were damaged during the high winds on November 15th and 16th, including the steel frame that held the trees, the tree in place. Crews of work reduced the height of the same tree and put it back into place with a different tie-down system. We'll allow for the celebration to go on as planned. It was a real fire drill in the day or two after the windstorm, and I thank Aaron and his entire team for pulling together to get the newly shortened tree back in place. And finally, we'd like to thank J.T. Gillespie for providing a helping hand when he stopped his vehicle to assist an employee at Oakdale Cemetery, putting out a lawnmower fire. We're very grateful for that citizen assist. Unfortunately, no one was injured. Finally, moving to the planning department, the downtown Sandusky Opportunity Zone Master Plan has entered its third phase, third phase and final concepts and ideas will soon be presented to the steering committee and ultimately the planning commission, Bayfront Corridor Committee, general public, and then finally the city commission. These ideas and concepts were directly tied to feedback during the first two phases of stakeholder meetings, steering committee meetings, and the online survey. Also, the city has given a notice to commence on fiscal year 20, round one demolitions, which will involve demolishing eight dilapidated structures located throughout the city. And then finally, some dates for public meetings for planning. Arts and Culture will take place Tuesday, December 15 at 5:15. Landmark will take place Wednesday, December 16 at 4:30. Board of Zoning Appeals, Thursday, December 17 at 4:30. Planning Commission, Monday, December 21 at 4:30. Just a reminder that all meetings will be held virtually and can be viewed on the city's YouTube page. That concludes my remarks for this evening, and I'm happy to answer any questions from the commission. Thank you.
Questions, Commissioners, for?
Mr. Chairman?
Questions for city manager?
Mr. Chairman? Yeah, just for clarification, I've ran into a few folks in the past week. I know it was in the register, I believe it was on the WIC, the local radio station, but folks are still allowed to come downtown like Friday night. I know we canceled the lighting and Santa Claus is canceled, but I told them you're still allowed to come down if you want to drive around and walk around the park, there's no problem with that, you know, just as far as social distancing and wear a mask.
Yeah.
That is correct, is it not, Mr. Webster?
Yeah, sorry, through the commission, I'm not even, I shouldn't have said something. Through the Commission President, Commissioner Waddington, I don't believe we're physically planning on restricting anyone from being down there. We're urging people to practice safety and to use caution, but certainly if folks want to be around downtown and can safely social distance, they are welcome, and hopefully it'll be a beautiful evening. And I know there will be a small ceremony for the virtual lighting that, that if folks aren't down there, they'd be able to witness in person.
Good.
Thank you. Additional questions for the city manager?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Murray?
Not so much a question, as I just want to amplify the tremendous importance of Mr. Webster's plea to get more people to apply for the boards and commissions. You know, we've had a lot of people who've put in decades of service on these boards and commissions. They would be delighted to step aside if somebody were willing to step forward and take their place. You know, we, we have a city commission that is much more representative of a body politic than we do of the boards and commissions. Sandusky, the city of Sandusky is 30%, what would be classified as minority populations, and, and yet our boards and commissions look too much like me, and that's not okay. We need, you know, add the median age is under 30 in this city. We would be delighted to have anybody on a board commission under the age of 50 half the time. That's not how it is. And, you know, in this era, we are talking about making sure that all voices in our community are heard and have a seat at the table. Well, here, the table's open, the seats open. We really need people to come forward. So anything that any of you can do to encourage more people, a new group of people, to step forward and, and man and woman, those boards and commissions will do a lot for just so many different things, for making sure that we have diversity of opinion and thought, cognitive diversity present in these decisions. You know, a lot of decisions are made by this commission, but there are so many boards and commissions that make decisions that affect the city life, that right now, those decisions are being made too much by people that look like me, and we really need folks to step forward if we'll be, if we're going to move Sandusky fully into the 21st century. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Murray, and I want to lobby and piggyback off of that as not, not just age diversity, but, and race diversity, but certainly, my wife reminds me all the time that women have a, have a different touch than a man does, so we certainly want to encourage female applicants. Lord knows, we do not have enough females as, as participants on these committees either, and I, I speak from a lot of experience, they have a, they have a tremendous amount to offer, so that encouragement stretches to young, to old, to black, to white, to Hispanic, and certainly to men and to women. And so we, we want to encourage every, everyone to participate if we possibly can. Additional items, questions for city manager? Now, we'll move to items of old business, any items of old business, Commissioners? Hearing none, we'll move to items of new business, any items of new business, Commissioners? As an item of new business, I need to set a public hearing or application for an amendment to the zoning map for 2101 Perkins Avenue for December the 28th, just before New Year's. If I can have a motion to set that executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Hearing no objection, that motion will be approved. That motion is approved. Additional items of new business, Commissioners? Ms. Briggs, are there any communications from residents regarding city business to be read?
Yes, Mr. President, we have a couple. The first comes from, at Ezekiel Ford, at 504 Mason Road East in Mylan, Ohio. They asked, or they said, "I asked a question concerning an EDIT grant for Samburu Tours. The meeting adjourned after Commissioner Poole asked for the questions to be investigated further. When can I expect a response to that?" During the same meeting, city manager Eric Webster stated that the EDIT application process has been amended and tightened up. What were those changes and what issues arrived to cause them? How will those changes prevent issues in the future? And what is the future of this grant program? Lastly, Tim Schwanger of 362 Sheffield Way in Sandusky said, "The city of Sandusky will be receiving $1.5 million in December from the Bureau of Workers' Compensation. Based on the city manager's report, $1 million will be placed in the general fund, with the remaining dollars going to various departments except police and fire. Two additional police officers have announced retirement in the past week. With the police and fire departments down, at least four employees each over the last eight months, please explain why the Bureau of Workers' Compensation refund is not being combined with other funding sources to bring fire and police employee numbers back to safe levels."
Um, thank you, Ms. Briggs. Mr. Webster, can I count on you to respond to Mr. Moore and Mr. Ford's question, earlier question, and I would ask that you respond to them? I, I know we've had a lot of discussions regarding the Bureau of Workers' Compensation money. I, I believe that you and perhaps Assistant City Manager Orzak are prepared to respond to Mr. Schwanger's question at this meeting. Need to unmute your mic, though.
So, yes, Commission President Brady, through you, I can actually answer both questions tonight, and John, please do, if you have anything additional to add to anything I say to the BWC question, but just for the sake of time, those are relatively easy, easily answered questions, and I'll take those both. As it relates to the EDIT grants, you know, I believe very modest changes were made to the grant application for circumstances or events, for example, if a business left the city after receiving a grant. But as far as our future intentions for those grants, which are created by the passage of Issue 8 and are utilizing emissions tax dollars, our goal is to continue that program, which has been tremendously successful and has helped to support the creation of, you know, nearly 50 businesses throughout the city in its five-plus years of existence, and help save some historic buildings in the city and attract millions of dollars of investments, both in Sandusky's building stock and to small businesses that are looking to expand in Sandusky or entrepreneurs, looking to open businesses in Sandusky. So we're very proud of the results of the EDIT program and look forward to its continued success. And of course, anything else, we will continue to refine that program with the support and leadership of the city commission as needs change. You know, we moved really quickly this year to modify that program when COVID hit and put $165,000 into small business grants, and we got out on the street very quickly. We put, we've put more into small businesses with local dollars than the county or anyone else has actually put in with combined federal stimulus dollars, and we have another round of federal stimulus dollars that will be coming out later. We were able to do that because Issue 8 allowed us to create programs to support economic development, and because small businesses are critically important to Sandusky, and we hope to continue to have that level of nimbleness to support the businesses that support our tax base in our community and employ, you know, thousands of residents throughout our city. That being said, moving to the Bureau of Workers' Compensation question, it was very fortunate, as I mentioned in my manager's report, that all $1.5 million were able to be put into the general fund. That led immediately, as soon as we had that knowledge, detailed conversations between myself and the administrative staff, including Director Reader and Assistant City Manager Orzak, and we are able to hire back police and firefighters. In fact, that process has already begun for both police and fire to begin to fill vacancies immediately. There's a process by which we have to go through, that Chief Orzak can speak to in a little more detail, so you'll begin to see those positions get backfilled, but we were very fortunate to be able to do that backfilling. It's just a reminder that BWC funding came very quickly. It went quickly from being not anticipated to anticipating a million dollars for the general fund, and then quickly from there to a million to $1.5 million, so we've also worked to respond quickly, and it is very likely, had we not received the BWC funding, that we could be in a position where we were actually cutting positions throughout the city in various departments, and so it was a wonderful turn of events, and we're very grateful for that investment. But Chief, please do, if you want to add details about the hiring process or timing for both police and fire, but that process has begun, and we're excited to get moving on it.
I would just add that the fire department, we did some interviews last week and made a conditional offer already to a new firefighter candidate, so he should be on board, I believe, by the end of the year. We are also in the process of scheduling interviews for other firefighter candidates. As far as the police department's concerned, we are waiting on Chief Oliver to arrive because the process is very in-depth. Through our civil service, we have to interview 10 candidates and do backgrounds, so Chief Oliver, one of his first tasks, they got interviews scheduled for the police, so those are scheduled for December 1st and 2nd. We plan on, if we have good candidates, which it looks like we should, having at least two policemen getting conditional offers by the end of the year. So that process is moving, the civil service process does take time for scheduling, we have to make sure there's 10 candidates and then eliminate those, so we are moving, as soon as we got the news, we moved quickly to schedule interviews and start the hiring process to help those departments get back to some staffing that are necessary.
Thank you, thank you both. You know, the, the wonderful blessing of a million and a half dollars from the Bureau of Workers' Comp could not have come at a more, more appropriate time for us. We, I will, I will paraphrase Commissioner Murray in my caution to you all that we're, we're not out of the woods yet. We certainly are clawing our way back, one, one strategy at a time, but being proactive early on in this pandemic certainly has, has benefited us well, and hopefully will continue to benefit us. I, I can tell you that this has certainly been a challenging, challenging nine months that we've gone through, but the horizon is out there somewhere. I think that we're going to find it, and hopefully we're going to find it very soon. A million and a half dollars helps us to, to look towards that horizon with much more optimism.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Poole?
It's certainly good to hear that we've, we've found some money to make sure that we have adequate police and fire folks on, on board. The, with regard to the first question that was asked, I believe Ms. DeMore was, identified some things that she thought were, were some shortcomings in the program we have for grants, and it's good that we made changes in general, and the, the history of how well we've done was nice to hear, but we're all familiar with it, and it sounds like that the specifics of what she asked were not really, the manager wasn't prepared to ask, so, to answer, so I'd ask if we would, between now and the next meeting, that he would identify what the problems were and what the changes were, because I think that's really all she's asking. What exactly did we do? We made some minor changes, indicate something was done. The question was related to, did you take care of these specific items, and whether or not they actually were problems? So I, I don't expect an answer tonight, but her question's still on the table.
Commissioner Poole, I believe Mr. Webster indicated that he would provide that answer.
I'm sorry, what's that?
I, I believe that, I believe that Mr. Webster indicated that he would provide that answer.
Great, thank you.
Sure. Any other items, Commissioners? And they're taking a motion to adjourn.
So moved.